θ is 3 dx, okay? So we are doing doubts of integration. Now when you substitute it here, y is equal to integral of seven remains seven, you need not have to change it. What is sin θ by three? Sin θ by three is sin x. Right? What is d θ? d θ is 3 dx. So seven into three is twenty one integral of sin x dx. Aaroh Jan, now you can integrate it, right?
Yes sir.
Sin x, ये पहले भी कर सकते थे बेटा हम लोग तो. To twenty one, this is minus of cos x plus constant c. So this is minus twenty one cos x plus constant c. Don't forget to write mention the arbitrary constant.
Sir, can you wait on this for one minute?
क्या-क्या?
Can you just wait on this for one minute?
Why?
Sir, I'm processing the information.
Process कर लो, process करने में, don't write it because I'll be giving you the recordings will. Okay, one more thing which I want to share all of with all of you is. I am uploading the recordings in the channel. Right? So please subscribe it so that you can and वो bell notification on करके रखो so that you are aware of कि upload हो गया. ठीक है तो तुमको पता चलता रहेगा till the time we are up and because our app is not working as of now. It will, we will start hopefully next one week or so, we will be able to start with it. तो तब तक के लिए आप लोग ये please on करके रखो, this process should be on, okay? So you don't miss on anything. Usually I am a bit more sincere towards the recording nowadays. I am trying to be sincere, actually बहुत अच्छे से तो नहीं कर रहा हूं मैं but I am trying to be more sincere. हाँ, Aaroh Jan, हो गया?
One second sir, I am just taking a screenshot.
Sir, I have found out.
लिखो वहां doubt में, इसमें doubt है कोई?
हाँ.
हाँ बोलो.
Sir, dx by d θ one by three का सोवा.
कौन हो तुम?
Rukvedh Mane.
हाँ, Rukvedh Mane, differentiation पढ़ा है कि नहीं तुमने?
हाँ.
पढ़ा है? बहुत बढ़िया बात, तो. x की value अगर मान लो two θ है, two θ square है, क्या differentiation होगा Rukvedh Mane इसका, dx by d θ बताओ?
Oh.
Sorry, x by d θ बताओ.
Sir, वो पता नहीं कैसे होते?
y is equal to x to the power cube का differentiation आता है तुमको?
आता है पर याद नहीं है.
हाँ तो ये याद रखना किसकी जिम्मेदारी बेटा?
मेरी.
तो कब रखोगे तुम याद इसको? मैंने सुना तुम्हारा integration खराब है, तो differentiation भी भुला गया है, तुमको कैसे याद होगा बताओ? और याद, पांच formula याद रखते हैं, देखो मैं तुम्हें सिखाता हूं, फिर से एक बार याद दिलाने की कोशिश करता हूं, याद रखना तुमको करना, ठीक है? जाके देखो differentiation का तुम्हारे पास recording है ही रखा हुआ, ठीक है? तो y is equal to x to the power n है, और अगर n constant है, ठीक है Rukvedh? तो dy by dx क्या होगा? n x to the power n minus one, ये याद है या नहीं है इसको रटो? You have to memorize it, इसका कोई उपाय नहीं है दूसरा, ठीक है? और, और हमेशा याद रखो, जो भी constant multiplied होता है उसको differentiation से बाहर निकाल दो, मतलब अगर इसी को मैं अगर इसी y को मैं लिखता हूं three x power four और मैं चाहता हूं कि मुझे dy by dx मिले, तो dy by dx क्या है, y dash है? तो three common निकालूंगा मैं और फिर यहां पे मैं dy by dx of x to the power four करूंगा? तो ये क्या हो जाएगा? ये हो जाएगा three into four x to the power three. Four minus one, समझ आया? n x to the power n minus one, इसकी value आएगी twelve x cube, got it?
Wow.
तो two θ square का क्या होगा differentiation? dx by d θ किया हमने, तो ये हो जाएगा four θ. तो इसका खुद का constant ऊपर से तू नीचे आया, multiply होगा, तू के साथ four मिला, two power minus one, two minus one is one, so four θ, got it? तो ऐसे यहां पे one by three constant निकाला था हमने, यहां पे one by three into θ था? तो one by three हमने बाहर निकाला, ठीक है? I hope all of you understood this, yes or no?
Yes sir.
मान, कछवा, छावा आया है क्या मान? ये फिर गाया बयाच, इसकी class लगानी पड़ेगी मुझे, हाँ. तो anyways, let's move to the next question.
Wait at writing.
नहीं, writing बाद में, writing is doubt out का writing, कितनी देर लिखोगे तुम लोग, एक, इतनी देर से क्यों लिखना है?
You are, you came on second side.
हाँ तो ठीक है, उसको तुमने समझा है ना? Talk किया, कि नहीं किया?
किया.
हाँ, ठीक है? हाँ बोलो, बोलो, क्या-क्या बोलो?
Question.
अरे बोलो तुम जो बोल रहे थे, पूरा करो उसको.
नहीं, वो भी, वो doubt था मेरा, ये.
ये doubt है? तो doubt समझ में आया कि नहीं तुमको, doubt clear हुआ? बस ठीक है. तो then what is the next one? सबके doubts लिखो बेटा, सब लोग यहां पर है ना? Q R H, Q R H, seventeenth का Q. अरे ये क्यों खुल रहा है बेटा? Four sine square y, cos square y by seven or So Q is integral of four sine square y dy. Now all of you pay attention. बच्चों ध्यान से सुनो, ये जो है ना बेटा, इस तरीके के जितने भी होंगे, again we have to bring this closer to what? क्या लिखे आना पड़ेगा हमको इसको? To the five of those basic functions, right? The integration of which we are aware of. That is what we have to do. So how will we do that? It's simple now, देखो इधर सब लोग. Always remember while writing, while integrating sine square θ or cos square θ type of questions, you have this expression, cos of two x is equal to one minus two sine square x or this is also equal to two cos square x minus one. समझ आया सबको, हाँ ना बोलिए?
Sir, is this identity?
Obviously this is identity, we discussed this in the previous session.
Ah yes.
Cos a plus a, cos a plus b discuss किया था कि नहीं?
Yes sir.
You guys are aware about this or not? Cos a plus b, sine a plus b, hello?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
हाँ, ये किया है ना, मुझे याद है, तो one minus two sine square x. So sine square x will now become one minus cos two x by two. Substitute it here. Four times sine square y, so in place of x, we have y here, so it is one over two. One minus cos two y dy. कहां से कहां तक integrate करेंगे भाई? कोई limit दिया नहीं है, so we will not integrate it. Limit नहीं लगाएंगे, तो two becomes constant, it has two integrations, one is dy minus the other one is cos of two y dy. I hope you guys understood this, yes or no?
Sir, I didn't understand how there two integrations.
क्या?
I didn't understand how there two integrations.
कहां तू integration है?
Sir, जहां पे वो integration dy है, I don't understand how minus integrate cos two y dy है.
तो इसको open करेगा ना? इसको multiply करेगा one dy को, तो क्या मिलेगा? अरे you do this or, क्या तुम लोग मतलब? When two functions are multiplied, sorry added and or subtracted and integrated, you don't you know how to expand it? Aaroh Jan?
Sir, I do know.
तो फिर, तो one को, तो यहां minus ही तो है? ये तो किया है ना तुमने, हाँ ना बोलो?
हाँ.
हाँ, तो इसको multiply करना है, one into dy, minus दूसरा integral है, cos two y dy. Understood?
Yes sir.
हाँ, तो two remains two, what is integral of dy? You are aware, what is integral of dy, tell me? ये देखो, तुमको इतना d of गधा सिखाया है, तुम
Sir, गधा ही है.
तो फिर, अब गधा तुम क्यों हो रहा है फिर? Integral को गधा रहने दो? तो भाई, समझ आया बेटा? Minus, ये क्या होगा? ये समझ आया कि नहीं भाई क्यों हुआ फिर से?
Yes, I did understand.
हाँ, ये इसका integral क्या था, इसका last class में सिखाया था, खूब integration करवाया, ये सब तुमको मैंने, पिछली class में. Standard formula दिया था ना, पिछली बार sin x, we derived it. This is minus cos a x upon a plus constant c, integral of cos b x dx is sine by, sorry b x upon c, sorry upon b plus constant c, पढ़ा है कि नहीं ये?
पढ़ा है absolutely.
हाँ, all of you. Or you can do integration by substitution, you can substitute two y as θ and then you differentiate it, then you substitute dy and then you integrate it. So cos two y dy, integral of cos two y dy. How many of you are aware about integration by substitution?
Yes sir.
Or you are not aware about it? Jyashini, Hariharan, Sauraj Datta, Vikha, मैं तक सब camera on करेंगे, नहीं तो class के बाहर सबको करता हूं, मैं अभी दो minute में. Yes, Aaroh Jan?
Sir, I am aware of integration.
Rukvedh Mane? कहां है Rukvedh Mane?
Sorry, you are.
You understood or not?
Yes sir.
Sir, my, sir, my network is slow करना, keep my camera off.
Sorry? अच्छा, your network
Sir, your voice is breaking, so करना, keep my camera off.
हाँ, 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 yes you can do it. Jyashini, you are done with your homework or not? This is, you are done this?
Yes sir, I had it out in the questions of Q and R.
Type your question numbers in the comment window.
Yes sir, I did.
I do it.
Sir?
हाँ बोलो.
Sir, can you please explain the identities, two identities that you have written?
Which one?
Sir, cos two x is equal to one minus two sine square x equals two cos square x minus one.
ये formula नहीं पढ़ा है तुमने बेटा? तुम ठीक नहीं क्यों, क्या बात करी, ये सब पहले भी पढ़ाया मैंने तुमको? तुमने पिछली दो class में नहीं, उसके पहले ही पढ़ाया ये सब है, cos a, cos b this is plus है अगर, तो minus आएगा यहां, और minus है अगर, तो यहां plus आएगा, this is sine a, sine b. ठीक है? Sin a plus minus b is, sine a cos b plus minus cos a sine b. ठीक है, यही extension है इसका. और दूसरा था sine square θ plus cos square θ is one. सब पढ़ा है तुम, ठीक है? तो वहां पे a और b की जगह x लिख दो? तो two x है तो क्या होगा? x plus x हो जाएगा वो, ठीक है? Anyways, तो this integration is, we have done this type of integrations the previous session also, today also we did sine का integration, so this will be sine two y upon two plus constant c, this is integration i. ठीक है? इसमें किसी को doubt है तो पूछ लो भाई फिर से. So this was m or कौन सा था r, cos square y by seven? Now I hope you will be able to do this one, cos square y by seven dy. चलो, Aaroh Jan? ये सभी का?
Sir, I did not understand this one.
Which one?
Sir, यही वाला, मैं कुछ third step नहीं समझ में आया.
कौन सा? ये वाला?
Yes sir.
ये इसका
Sir, इसके बाद वाला step, इसके बाद
ये, ये?
Yes sir.
तुमने integration by substitution का recording देखा है बेटा?
नहीं sir, मैं आपको बता दो, आप से पांच minute देख पाए उसके.
तो please उसको देख के आओ ना, उसको फिर समझ जाओगी तुम ये.
ठीक है sir.
ये, ये समझ में आया था तुमको, इधर आओ, देखो ये तो करवाया ही है ना मैंने अभी तुमको?
Yes sir.
ये वाला, ये वाला किया तुमने अभी?
Sir, ये आ गया था.
तो इसमें, जहां पे, वहां पे two y लिखा है ना Vikha? Process क्या था? हमें इसको इस तरीके के format में लाना है, ठीक है?
Yes sir.
वहां पे क्या था? integral of cos two y dy था? उसको मुझे किस format में लाना है? integral of cos θ के format में लाना है?
Yes sir.
मैं वहां पर two y को क्या लिखूंगा? θ लिखूंगा, जैसे यहां x को लिखा था? θ by three, तो यहां पे two y को लिख लेंगे हम लोग, x लिख लो, तुम यहां θ लिख लो जो तुम्हें लिखना है? ठीक है?
ठीक है sir.
और फिर dy by dx निकाल के solve करो, उसको वहां पे substitute करके?
ठीक है sir, अब हो जाएगा.
ठीक है, हाँ? अब कौन सा था? एक second रुको, अरे यार ये बंद करो इसको. No. फिर था r, Q R M. Aaroh Jan, cos square seven होगा कि नहीं होगा आप solve?
Sir, हो जाएगा.
Cos square y को क्या लिखेंगे हम लोग? ये ऊपर से उठा के लाओ इसको? Cos two x plus one by two. All of you please pay attention, this is one over seven, you will write cos square y as you will write cos square y as cos two y plus one upon two dy, understood?
Yes sir.
This is one upon fourteen, integral of cos two y dy plus integral of dy. This is one upon fourteen, again integral of cos two y is how much? Sin two y upon two, understood?
Yes sir.
Plus integral of dy is y, plus there should be a constant as arbitrary constant c. One by fourteen multiplied by c is again a constant, so I am writing the c separately. So this is the final answer to this. I hope all of you understood this part, yes or no?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
हो गया मेरे यहां, राम चालू, एक second. बहुत बढ़िया, चलो शाबाश. Vivan Chaudhary, तुम्हारा क्या हाल है?
इतना
मतलब क्या होता है? सवाल का जवाब चाहिए, तुम्हारा क्या हाल? इसका मतलब, क्या समझाना है? मतलब कैसे समझाऊं उसको मतलब? हाँ?
Yeah, Aaroh.
H, 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 H. हाँ, चलो H को करते आओ, two x into one minus x by three dx. Two x into one minus x by three, आइए करते हैं इसको solve. Integral of two x into one minus one upon x power three into dx, यही है ना? कैसे बिगड़ जा रहा हूं?
So, ये अच्छे ना?
हाँ?
ये अच्छे ना?
हाँ, ऊपर वह, जो था तुम्हारा, check कर लो, तुम, तुम्हारे पास है न, text note copy?
Yes, I do. It is the same.
Hmm, तो अब इसको क्या करोगे तुम? Open कर दो इसका integral, कितना हुआ ये? two x dx minus two upon x square dx. ये integrate नहीं होगा तुमसे?
हो जाएगा.
तो फिर क्यों नहीं किया? फिर पूछ क्यों रहा है? बोलो बालक?
Hmm, उस समय नहीं हो रहा था.
अरे, ओपन करके देखा ही नहीं उसको तुमने? simplify करने की कोशिश नहीं की तुमने उसको? तुमने कहा sir को दे दो करेंगे sir? है कि नहीं? अरे यार, ये मेरा, कुछ तो गड़बड़ हो रही आज internet में ना? Eighteenth का e part, इसका doubt है, Q R square upon, Aaroh Jan, ये last class में किया है मैंने ये question
Sir, I did that, like I watched the recording I had, मैंने देखा था, like फिर भी I didn't understand how my answer, it's still coming as different after two attempts. It's coming as different, it's different.
Which, इसका answer?
हाँ.
तुम गलत कर रहा होगा और क्या है? उसमें, इसमें क्या इधर-उधर का बात करना है जी? तुम गलत कर रहे हो, तुम्हारा answer गलत आ रहा है? Different है कि गलत है?
Sir, अलग है समझा answer की.
हाँ तो गलत है ना? अरे, answer की में अगर चार लिखा है, तुम्हारा answer पांच आ रहा है, तो गलत है कि सही है?
गलत है.
गलत है, तो आइए, Jan साहब देखिए इसको क्या करना है इधर? One minus R cube, तो let's say, I am writing one minus R cube as t. All of you please pay attention, those of you have not attended session, Vikha, देख बेटा, कैसे करते हैं integration by differentiation? तो मुझे क्या देखना है ना Vikha, यहां पर I have to bring this question closest to those five basic integrals, you know five basic integrals, right Vikha?
Yes sir.
हाँ, उसके पास लेके जाना है मुझे, ठीक है? तो उसमें क्या करना है बेटा? ऊपर देखो तुम्हें, ये समझ में आ रहा है ना, R cube का differentiation, three R square होता है, हाँ या ना?
Sir, एक बार repeat कर दो, आपके
R cube, R cube का differentiation, three R square होता है, ये आपको पता है?
Yes sir.
है ना? तो R cube का differentiation, जब three R square होता है, ये मुझे मालूम है पहले से और मुझे दिख रहा है कि इसका एक part मुझे ऊपर दिखाई दे रहा है, R square. तो I have to look for, मतलब मुझे यहां पर इसमें से किसी function को कुछ substitute करना है? Check करो, यहां दो function दिखाई दे रहे हैं कि नहीं तुमको? Q तो constant है उसको बाहर कर दो? R square तुम्हें दिखाई दे रहा है और एक दिखाई दे रहा है, root of one minus R, हाँ या ना Vikha?
Yes sir.
ये भाई, Vikha के लिए नहीं है, this is for all of you, right? I am addressing to her because she didn't attend the session, so I am addressing to all of you. So we have two function, Sauraj Datta, तुमने भी attend नहीं किया था, ध्यान से सुनो? R square, एक function R square है, the second function is root of one minus R. Okay?
Yes.
Now, which function, which function is differentiation of the other one? The differentiation of R square is two R. So can I say that one minus R cube is differentiation of R square? No. Or closer to it? No. But if I differentiate one minus R square, what do I get? One का differentiation is zero. Minus R cube का differentiation is one, का differentiation is zero. Minus R cube का differentiation is three R square, yes or no?
Yes sir.
So do I have R square in the numerator?
Yes sir.
Can I make it minus three R? Obviously yes, by dividing and multiplying by minus three, yes or no?
Yes sir.
So now I found that differentiation of one minus R cube is R square, it has R square का term. So I will substitute this one minus R cube as some variable t now.
Okay sir.
I hope all of you understood this, Om Deshmukh, Kavish Shah, Tanushree, हाँ बोलो, बोलो, कौन सा
How do you, how to get rid of the cube?
How to get rid of the?
Cube, because numerator is cube, I was integrating it and then I got
Where is cube in the numerator? I don't
No, Q Q, like letter Q, Q R square.
Q is a constant, well, which we don't know, उसका कोई relation नहीं है, when there is no element related to it, it's a constant for us, get rid of it, उसको बाहर कर दो?
Sir, later by like doing the substitution, I got Q and then the integration.
Is a constant, Q is a constant, Om, treat it as a constant.
Okay.
ठीक है?
Hmm, yes.
Anybody else who wants to ask, हाँ बोलो, 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 जल्दी बोलो.
I brought the cube out, so then I put the like x to the power minus half
हाँ.
Minus half times four dx. So I have to integrate u to the power minus half times four.
So what, what do you want me to answer this? You want me to answer it or what are you telling?
Am I doing right things?
No, that I don't. I'll, I'll show you, don't worry, I'll do it and then you can check, okay?
Yes.
Anybody else, Subhaditya? Tassim? Rukvedh Mane, Sauraj Datta? Sauraj Datta, तुम बेटा हाँ ना बोलना शुरू करो? देखो, Om. Pay attention. So we are doing, Om, pay attention here, one minus R cube, we are treating it as t, right?
Yes sir, sir, but I did the other way around.
What did you do the other way?
Sir, I put that, because it's root one minus R cube, I put entire bracket, I made power one half and because we are dividing it, then I made negative half, so times negative.
That is what I am saying, Om, if you will put it root, then the differentiation of this function will not be having R square term.
No, no, yeah, okay sir, yeah.
It will not have R square term.
Yeah, I did one minus R cube, I did one minus.
One minus R?
Yeah, I did the, I did substitution of one minus R cubed only.
अच्छा, you did this one?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, okay, let's do it, so we have dt by dr as minus three R square, yes or no?
Yes.
Now what is dr here? Dr is dt sorry, R square dr is minus dt by three, yes or no?
Yes.
Pay, just substitute it here. This will become Q R square dr is minus dt by three root of t, yes or no?
Yes sir.
Yes or no?
Yes. Yes sir.
Yes.
Minus Q by three is a constant, take it out. Now we have integration of t to the power minus one by two dt. Yes or no?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
This is minus Q by three. This is t to the power minus one by two plus one upon one plus one by, sorry minus one minus one by two. Yeah, minus one by two plus one.
Yes.
All of you, yes or no?
Yes.
So this is minus Q by three into two into root t. This is minus two Q by three into root t. I hope all of you understood, this is the integration I.
Sir, plus c.
हाँ, बिल्कुल, शाबाश, अच्छा, t को पहले मुझे change भी करना है. In place of t, I have to write one minus R cube. अब Om, तुम देखो तुमने क्या गलती की है बेटा, check?
Sir, while doing like dt by dr instead of differentiating, I did the integration there also.
Why, अब देख, अब एक बात बता, therefore that dr, you missed that dr, now you have to bring that dr, while integrate, when you integrate, how that dr will come? See, why we are differentiating, all of you please pay attention. Why we are differentiating this? Why we are differentiating this? Because, because once we are replacing this term R once we are substituting or representing R as t we want to represent dr as dt. That's why we are differentiating it, understood? हम differentiate क्यों कर रहे हैं? We are differentiating it because because since we are representing R with, we are replacing R as t we want dr as dt over t, that's why we are differentiating, so don't integrate Om.
And so what about R square dr part?
Where is R square dr? अरे, that is what we are replacing, now that entire thing, it came with R dr, that's why we replace it with dt by
Oh yes.
That's why we check whether one function is differentiation of the other one or not.
Yes.
है ना? हाँ बोलो.
Uh, I did all the same steps and all and my answers came, coming out same as yours but जो answer की में लिखा है, while yours checking, it's coming out different, yours and mine.
अरे भाई, मेरा answer उससे match कर रहा है या नहीं?
नहीं कर रहा है.
मेरा answer भी match नहीं कर रहा है? हाँ, तो अब मुझे देखना पड़ेगा, तुम कौन सा answer check कर रहा है?
Answer eighteen E.
अभी देखते हैं, रुक जाओ. abhi dekhte hai ruk jaao minus six one minus R cube root two plus constant six minus six likha raha hai ek second maine ka phatka hai arey yaar waha Q hai hi nahi dikha hi nahi raha hai uske answer me uske option me Q hai kya
no nahi hai
haan to phir galat hai uska jab Q hi nahi diya usne to kya karenge us tumhara answer mera answer match kar raha hai ki nahi ye batao
yes sir my answer is coming out as minus Q by three times two
because see all of you pay attention there is no Q in this right so there is a printing mistake here ye Q minus ye minus two by three Q hoga thik hai isko thik kar lo bhai sab log eighteen T me there is Q over here right this Q is a constant so since there is no Q in the answer so this is wrong answer for the from them now comes the next part of it nineteen ka in nineteen ka in X square D isme kya hua bhi isme kya hua ye bhi picchli class me kia hai
so my answer is coming out my answer is not matching as my steps the question was X square DX zero B by three
ye answer is iska answer
same my answer is coming out that only but the answer jo answer ki me likha hai wo hi nahi hai
thik hai usko thik kar lo tumha eighteen ka kya hai konsa tha ye nineteen ka na nine B Q ye bhi galat de raha hai B by three galat hai na DT banana chahiye dekho bhai match me agar one plus one tumko koi three bata raha hai tumko pata hai two hota hai toh sahi likha hai usko thik hai then sir I am not aware of question nineteen hari haran kya question nineteen nahi aata hai tum
right didn't attend the class sir
so watch the recording
sir I was out of station sir
to arey watch the recording usme kya hai
okay sir
haan see the recording
okay sir thank you
seventeen Q and R eighteen C jia shin subhaditya ka konsa hai bhai eighteen ka E hai subhaditya tumhara eighteen ka E hua ki nahi hua maine karvaya na abhi haan
yes sir
thik hai karban singh gill eighteen ka D or C D sabka hai D or C what is eighteen D question padho kona hai karban singh gill eighteen D padho konsa kya question hai karban kaya bo gaya kya hai hum kona hai aur iska doubt D or X cube into X power four minus one whole square ah aao isko karte dekho bacho this is eighteen D right all of you please pay attention again whose doubt is eighteen ka D karban ka hai vo to chala gaya aur ek aur kona hai isme eighteen wala guru deep guru deep where are you raise your hand raise your hand haan chala gaya ladka haan yes guru deep haan tell me what what is the first step guru deep what should we do in these type of substitutions
sir
identify the functions
yes sir
how many functions are here
sir one
two
two as sir
X cube is one function X power four minus one is second one okay
yes sir
now tell me differentiation of X cube can be X power four minus one is it possible
not sir
yes or no
no sir
haan so differentiation of X power four minus one can be X cube or will it have term of X cube X power four minus one will it have its differentiation will it have term of X cube
no sir
yes why no if I substitute theta as X power four minus one all of you please pay attention then what is D theta by DX what is differentiation of X power four guru deep
four X power three
four X cube minus zero so get rid of this what is X cube DX it's D theta by four yes or no
yes sir
that's it so this will become this will become theta square into B theta by four understood subhaditya sorish sorish datta
sir sir I am actually out of session so my network is not very well
thik hai no else
mujhe aapka voice bhi cracka rahe bich bich me
main samajh gaya tumhari parishaan me toh kya kar sakte koi baat to theta this will become theta the integration of this will be theta cube upon twelve okay guru deep plus constant C what is theta X power four minus one so X power four minus one cube upon twelve plus constant C okay initially initially you may struggle for finding substitutions right all of you please pay attention initially you may struggle but this is a part of practice right the type of integrations which you are doing here all of you the type of integration which we are which you are doing here is on a scale of one to ten at your level it is close to nine on difficulty level will these type of integrations be there in physics to some extent yes so that's why we are doing right not to extent of to the level of nine or ten on a difficulty level but he has four five of course yes to I'll repeat this in hindi aap log jo kar raha hai integration ye on a difficulty level this is close to ten nine eight nine pakal dois physics me hoga kya of course hoga par is level ka hoga nahi four five level ka hoga on a level of one to ten on a scale of one to ten difficulty level will be close to four to five so that's why you are practicing it right you have to do these questions multiple times ek bar do bar teen bar karos you will get a knack a hang on it here yes is type that is how we have to substitute so we have to keep this in mind we have to identify two functions we have to check whether one function is differentiation of the other one or not and then do the integration okay so let's do this so D I did I hope all of you understood that D part yes or no eighteen D guru deep and karban singh gill karban singh gill chala gaya koi baat nahi aur kya tha ah jia shin seventeen Q and R jia shin I did seventeen Q right
yes
R
R also you did
did eighteen C did or not
sir I was
I'll check
I'm not sure if you did that I only
I'll I'll check I'll check I'll
sir I got an answer I want to check it because it seems like long
haan now now see again it's one minus cos T by two whole square sine T by it's one minus all of you please pay attention it's one minus cos T by two chalo aap hi log karenge isko whole square sine T by two into DT now jia shin tell me you have two functions here all of you chalo kavish sha se puchte hai kavish sha bataiye konsa se do function rey aap
sir vo pai pi ti hai you read hai
T hai na beta pai kaha hai pai dikha raha hai kya maine to T likha hai usme question me bhi T hai chalo haan kavish sha bataiye haan this is first function second one
sine T by two
sine to T by two to sine T by two ka differentiation we get cos T by two yes or no and one minus cos T by two ka differentiation we will get sine T by two ye bhi milega par ye DT ka kya karenge so this DT we will get along acha there is square also to done then it's your actually it's your experience and judgment only so what we will do is we will think of then we will do and see right this type case in differentiation may when both the elements are present so we write one minus cos T by two yashini please pay attention we write Y as one minus cos T by so since we are replacing cos T by T by Y we will write DT also we will try to replace by DY so DY by DT is this is zero cos differentiation is minus sine so this will be plus one by two sine T by two jia shin you understood this differentiation or not
yes sir
and those of you whose doubt is not this one rugved mane you understood this or not rugved
sir later than that sine T by two cancels
no sine T by two will not cancel why
no no if if we replace in the original equation D by T uh DT it will become it will become DY over sine T by two over two
two DY two DY will become sine T by two into DT okay om
yes
so we are replacing sine T by two DT with two DY got it jia shin understood or not
yes sir I did the same thing but using a different variable and longer
no worries no worries so this is Y square this is Y square om samajh a rahe beta nahi a rahe
yes sir also instead of saying two DY just put in DY
haan to two likha raha tha na ye baana idhar aayega to two becomes two integral of Y square DY this is this so this is two Y cube by three vivan chaudhary tumhara koi doubt nahi hai kya is baat
par maine message kiya to like same tha na
phatka na
type badre repeating kiya
acha thik hai phir baaki rest of you
no sir
harshita nahi aaye aaj harshita is not here tassim tumko samajh a rahe beta ye nahi a rahe
yes sir toh mera doubt isliye nahi hai because abhi maine question number seventeen ke L part toh ki kia hai could not do
koi baat nahi koi baat nahi jia shin you understood this doubt
yes sir
rugved rugved
yes sir
samajh a rahe tumko
main samja
tumhara doubt kyu nahi hai aap
kya
tumhare pas doubt kyu nahi hai tumne sarah homework kar liya hai
nahi
karnavani kab tak karo ge tum
jo limit wale hai vo karna hai
acha aur baaki usme koi doubt nahi hai seventeen or eighteen me tumko
tha par vo dusre homework me likha hai toh vo dhun ke main aapko send karta hu
kab karo ge send
ah kal nahi to aaj
aaj kal kyu kar raha hai haan aur kona hai bhai yaar sorish datta to bahare issse baat nahi karenge vidhimat tripathi ji tripathi ji kaha hai ghoom rahi hai aapki dhara gayi hai vappas
nahi sir aap dhara a gaya
to phir aapka homework kaha hai aapko koi doubt
sir maine bhet diya tha nahi sir aap jo doubts se samjha di
acha subhaditya datta tumhara homework kaha hai pehle tumne homework nahi bheja hai mujhe
sir besh diya hai
acha aur doubts
haan sir pucha tha aur aapne bata diya pehle
ho gaya hai acha avika mehta tumhara kya hal hai beta
sir maine k questions kiye hai to homework kiye hai main lecture ni attend kiya hai last
thik hai to tum kab tak kar logi aur kab tak doubt bhejo gi mujhe
sir um next class tak kar logi main homework aapko send kar doungi sir sec kal tak
thik hai tanushri your doubt doubt beta
most of my doubts were repeated sir they had asked it already so I have gotten all bit now
okay om desh mukh
no sir I don't have doubts
now you don't have doubts
no sir
I think I have done all your doubts subhaditya ka E tha vo bhi ho gaya hai everyone thik hai A R O J N kaha chala gaya
sir main aao
hand raise karo jarah dikhte kyu nahi hai tum haan tumko ab samajh me a rahe kaise kar raha hai
yes samajh a gaya I am very confident in this
see my suggestion to all of you is I can understand this is a new thing for all of you and you are struggling in this you have struggled a lot so but see that's why you are here right we are starting early and all of you are doing very good right I am really happy with the way you are progressing the only thing is now we have to start taking the tests so all of you have got your user ID and password of testing portal do you guys have your user ID and password of testing portal
no sir
if you don't have if you don't have then just ping me in the comment window not comment window send me in my personal in the group group me all of you can send the messages yes or no
yes sir
tag it to Mister rakish mishra right tag it to Mister rakish mishra that sir I want my user ID and password of testing portal understood
sir could you repeat the name of the testing
portal
I didn't know for the first time okay
haan now those of you who have not got it till now you can ask Mister rakish mishra tag it to Mister rakish mishra and request for the user ID and password of the testing port right and your first test will be before you are around thirteenth of October because I think by how many of you are having your exams now also done with your exams everyone half yearly anybody whose exam is still going on subhaditya datta dubai wale bachhe jitne hai om desh mukh
hello bhai sir my exams are in like three weeks sir
haan to you still have time
yes
right so this week only we will take your first test of vectors I hope you are all of you are confident in vectors yes or no and all of you have attended the sessions your doubts of vectors have been cleared everybody is very good at vector right so you will have your first test of vectors on this Sunday Sunday we will I'll open the test right it will be activated and it will be there till the entire day thik hai so you can have your one hour of your own time and you can attempt the test meanwhile before that before attempting the test you can go and start just go through the testing port okay you get your user ID and password you he will send you the details and he will you can ask him if we can help you with how to scroll around or you guys are more intelligent than him in exploring these software stuffs right so you can go through it if you face any difficulty or challenge you can tag me you can ask me ki sir ye kaise ho raha hai I'll help you go through right I hope I am clear in this or else I will take your one session on Saturday or I'll 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 send you a video also where to find the test how to take it I'll send you the video also but before that I want you to explore it on your own got it so your test starts from now onwards we already have done vectors differentiation integration calculus and we have also done So your test starts from now onwards. We already have done vectors, differentiation, integration, calculus and we have also done units and dimension. So preferably, I would like to take at least two tests before your Diwali vacations. So one of vectors and one of calculus. So please start preparing for it. Thik hai? Just revise it. Don't take stress of these tests. This is how much you know, what is your minimum level of learning in these topics which you have learnt. There will be many more number of such tests on these topics only. To ye tumko itne aache se ho jayega ki tumhe yaad ho jayega ki ha, differentiation, integration or calculus me, vectors me mujhe koi challenge, nahi. Okay? So, and I will take test only when you are, there is no challenge of your terminal exams or half yearly's or final exams. So don't worry about. Right? But please prepare for the test and take the test. Don't take the test and prepare. Thik hai? At least revise the questions which you have already done. That much will do. Already done questions ko aap revise kar sakte hai? Vectors ka, yes or no? You will be able to recall it from Etsy Verma as well as from the booklet. Right? So please do it. And on next what is this Saturday? Tin, chaar, pach, pas tariq, October fifth, hena? Us to, ghapla ho gaya isko. Ha, October fifth, you are having your first test. You guys have not taken any test till now, right?
Yes.
Chalo, shabba. Toh bas tayyar ho ja, jawano. To a very happy dashara to all of you and a very happy Navratri. We are culminating, culminating.
Sir, tomorrow, to Ashil bhi dekhna.
Nahi. Abai tyahar manayenge, tum kam, ye sab kam. Mtlb, Musalman desh me thodi re raha hai, bhai. Dashara manayenge, nahi manayenge?
Sir, manayenge.
Phir Musalman desh me thodi re raha hu, main UAE pe, Dubai me, Saudi me thodi re raha hu main. Aur Bharat me abhi bhi Bharat varsh me abhi tyahar aache se manaya jata hai. To all of you, a very happy dashara to you all, thik hai? And enjoy the festivals. Saare festivals khub manao. Koi, tum sab chota bachcha hai. Tum log ko koi jarat nahi hai, falsus chor bachane ki, ki, bahut padhai karni mujhe aur kya, kya nahi kar jana hai. Sab jiyarvi, bharvi me band bajeegi tumhari, badni hai.
I got disconnect. Sir, what were you telling? Your voice is breaking for me.
I'm, I'm saying, Jyashini, I'm, I'm just wishing all of you a very happy dashara. Time tomorrow, we are not having, nahin, we don't have any class tomorrow. Thik hai? So to aap log jo hai, aache se tyahar manaiye aur khub tyahar manao. Usme festivals me koi kami mat karu. Jiska jo festival hai, sabko manana chahiye. Samajh a raha hai sabko? Ha, ek aat class gol karte, uske liye mujhe koi dikkat nahi. Isiliye to tumko kai sal padana hai mujhe, bhi chaar sal padana hai. Pardte ro. Thik hai? Par, ye pakkha hai. Jab padho, to bahut imandari se padho. Jo kam hai, usko imandari se karu. You have to do everything with utter sincerity and honesty. That's it. Football khelna hai, match hai, practice match hai, league match hai, tumhara khelo, main usse mujhe koi parishaan nahi. Tumko debate discussion me jana hai, half yearly likha hai, sab padho, aache se karu kam. Par, jab mera kam kar raha hu, to imandari se, main I am not pressurizing you to burn your midnight oil or jo bhi hai, jo tum, mtlb, neen kharaap karu, I am not saying you that. But do one hour forty-five minutes. Consistency will pay you in the long, right? Be consistent. Thik hai? Chalo. A very happy dashara to all of you. We will meet again on next Wednesday.
Sir, happy dashara to you too.
Thank you so much.
Happy dashara.
Happy dashara, sir.
Happy dashara.
Happy dashara.
Happy dashara. Chalo, bye.
Bye, Saty.
Thank you.